All right. Good evening. I'm calling to order the Planning Commission meeting for November 20th, 2017. Ms. G, can you call the roll?
Ms. Halkenberry?
Here.
Mr. Krasner?
Here.
Mr. Rankin?
Here.
Mr. Stevens?
Here.
Ms. Teetz?
Here.
Mr. Wodisca?
Here.
Mr. Jean is absent this evening.
All right, thank you. We have no one speaking at Speaker's Series. The next item is adoption of the agenda. Can we get a motion to slightly adopt the agenda so that we do the meeting minutes first? Since we're starting just a few minutes early, I want to make sure we get that and not have anybody miss our 8:30 start.
All right, so I move that we move the Agenda Item 9 to be prior to 6A, and the rest of the Agenda would remain as is.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, great. So, quick administrative stuff before 8:30.
We've got to take for receipt of petitions first.
Oh, we're going to move it. I'm sorry. Okay. Ms. G, do you have any petitions for those items not on the Agenda?
I have none.
Okay. Yep, all right. Now we're moving to the minutes. Anybody have any comments about the October 16th minutes? We have gone a full month without meeting.
Oh, my God.
Very unusual.
I didn't have any, though.
We good? All right. I'm good as well. Then can I get a motion to adopt the October 16th meeting minutes? Second?
Second.
All right, great. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, wonderful. Meeting minutes have been accepted. All right, now we're moving into Item 6A, the 116 Great Falls Street subdivision.
Can I move to continue that to a date certain, December 18th, 2017?
You have a second on that?
I'll second it.
All right. Did you get that, Ms. G?
My job.
Looks like Lindy beat them to the punch.
It's my job to second things.
What was the date?
Sorry, December 18th, 2017.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, great. We're moving right along. Okay. Item 7A, Downtown Plaza with the 100 block of West Broad Street.
Good evening, Commissioners. Carly Aubrey with Planning Staff. I'm going to give a brief presentation and then turn it over to Kim Callahan with Public Works to discuss some more details about the project and where it's come since you guys last saw it in a work session. The City of Falls Church is seeking site plan approval to construct a public downtown plaza within the 100 block of West Broad Street. It would include landscaping, bench seating, movable tables and chairs, evening lighting, a chalk wall, and an area for small performances. Also included in the site plan are three add-on alternatives, an interactive water feature, a fire pit, and paving for the private alley along the west side of the plaza. These alternatives are dependent upon cost, available budget, and/or coordination with the adjacent property owner. The Planning Commission held work sessions on this item at their May 15th and September 18th meetings. The Architectural Advisory Board discussed the plaza at their September 6 meeting, and the Tree Commission discussed the plaza at their October 18th meeting. Both of their comments are included in the staff report. The site and surrounding properties have a future land use designation of mixed use and are located in the B2 Central Business Zoning District. The subject site is also part of the core entertainment area within the Downtown Falls Church Planning Opportunity Area. The project meets several goals or policies of the Comprehensive Plan, including the updated vision chapters, small-town character, and an urban setting core value by providing a place for community involvement, festivals and events, and investment in the arts. Additionally, the Parks for People Chapter and the Downtown Falls Church Small Area Plan depict the area as part of a larger central plaza within the core entertainment area. Public facilities such as the Downtown Plaza are permitted by right in the B2 zoning district. Off-street parking spaces for parks are listed as a Planning Commission determination based on criteria such as number of persons expected to use the facility, their means of transportation, and the availability of on- or off-street parking spaces nearby. The total number of parking spaces on the city lot after construction of the plaza would be 28 parking spaces, or about one space for every 400 square feet of plaza area. And based on the seating capacity chart on the site plan, there's available seating for approximately 112 persons, and that's about one parking space for every four people. These ratios are similar to other public assembly uses listed in the off-street parking table in the zoning code. Additionally, it's anticipated that a lot of users would access this plaza by foot or bicycle, and there's nearby off-street public parking at city-owned lots at the corner of Park and North Maple and on Park Place, and then parking arrangement agreements with Kaiser and George Mason Square. There are three landscape waivers requested for approval from the Planning Commission for reductions in the required amounts of perimeter and interior parking lot landscaping because there are no proposed modifications to the majority of the existing parking lot with the exception of the area adjacent to the plaza. The third waiver request is to provide more than 50% of any one plant species specifically for the number of honey locust trees which are selected as suitable for the location and conditions within the plaza, as well as providing a consistent matching selection for design purposes. With the exception of these waivers, the site plan is at compliance with the zoning code and meets the requirements and considerations for site plan approval. At this time, unless there's any questions for me, I'll turn it over to Kim.
What is Kim going to talk about that's different than what you're talking -- because I have some questions.
Okay.
What is she speaking about that?
She's going to go into more details of the plan and then changes that have occurred since you guys last saw it in work session.
That was my question. So, yes, let's move to the next. Let's move to Kim.
Carly, Kim Callahan, I'm the City Project Manager for the Downtown Plaza project. Carly already gave a brief overview, so I'll skip, you know, rehashing the information that she already went over, and I'll mainly focus on the changes that have occurred as part of the site plan and building permit review process, some based on staff comments. There weren't a lot of wholesale changes, but there are definitely things that I wanted to point out and note. The first two are the addition of a manufactured BMP to treat on and off-site stormwater and the use of the post-and-loop bike rack instead of the little city bike racks. In the original version that you saw back in September when I presented, we were planning on putting two little city bikes at the north entrance of the site. There wasn't quite enough clearance to provide the offsets that the transportation planners wanted, so we, instead of just doing one little city bike rack, we decided to propose two post-and-loop bike racks that are still in agreement with the streetscape standards. The other feature we added was a BMP to treat phosphorus removal, to treat the stormwater. One of the things that was brought up at the Architectural Advisory Board was the idea of treating stormwater and being environmentally friendly, and they had suggested putting a bio-swell into some of the planter areas, but I really didn't feel comfortable flushing all of the stormwater from the parking lot into the entrance of our site and into the grassy area. I didn't think that was an appropriate use of the space. So instead, as you can see, there's a storm sewer system, an existing storm sewer system that runs through the city's property, and there's an existing manhole out in the streetscape in Broad Street. Not in Broad Street, but the streetscape along Broad Street. And so we're replacing that manhole with a, it's called a CDS system. Basically, what it does, the water comes into that manhole and it spins the water around, and it pushes all the trash up to the top, and the sediment falls to the bottom. So it takes out the trash, it takes out some nutrients, it has phosphorus removal, and then it pushes the water through a filter and then back out into the storm sewer system.
Where's the trash go?
It hangs out on top, and then the maintenance crews have to come by and clean it out periodically.
Okay.
And the good thing about this, it's not just treating our site, our specific site, it's treating about 1.6 acres of impervious area for that whole parking lot. So it's really a benefit for that whole area in general. The other changes were replacing the green wall with a cedar wall, which I touched on briefly during the last work session. There was concerns about being able to maintain that green wall and keep it looking nice, so we changed it to a cedar wall, and I could show you the -- the coloring doesn't show up well here, but it would be a cedar wall about 10 feet high, and the reason we wanted to use cedars is because they last about 20 years. They're, it's resistant to damage from moisture and rot and insects, so that's really, it's got a longevity there that we don't have with other types of woods. We talked about maybe using reclaimed wood, but we don't know what kind of species those are, and I was hesitant to use reclaimed wood and then having to possibly replace it in five years because it's been, gotten rotted.
Is this wood going to be painted at all?
No, it'll be sealed, and so it's a nice brown color initially, but then it slowly fades into a silvery gray color. We could stain it. If you stain it, you have to re-stain it every two years, so that would just be a maintenance cost, but it doesn't have to be stained in order to, you know, to maintain its longevity.
So what about, I'm just throwing questions out here as opposed to letting you finish. What about if there's graffiti on it that can then be painted? That's sort of really more my, it's less maintenance and more if something were to happen, can it be moved?
Right, if there's graffiti, I would think maybe you could sand it down rather than a, might be easier to remove than a brick wall, but that graffiti actually and spray paint wasn't something I had considered with the wall, but I assume there's a way to, I'm sure there's a way to clean it or sand it off.
Okay. I mean, with a green wall, it's less likely. It seemed like to have graffiti, but that was what I was thinking. Okay.
And then making sure, in our planter areas, we made sure that all the shrubs and grasses were native, and these plant selections were reviewed with the city arborist and reviewed with the Tree Commission, and that everybody was in agreement with the selections that were made.
Yeah, and I appreciate that the, especially the grasses are now native because there were quite a few invasive ones before. And I'm, but the trees are still mostly non-natives, and I'm really, I understand your desire to have that honey locust, but it's not native to Virginia, and it can be invasive in this area. So, in fact, most of the trees aren't native, so I'm not understanding why we couldn't have done a better job with the trees.
Well, the trees that we selected, especially the honey locust, we did select a seedless variety on there so that it wouldn't spread, but these were just plants. We selected the honey locust because they have a higher canopy, which is what we want in a plaza area, and they're not super dense foliage. They don't drop a lot of flowers, they don't drop a lot of gunk to clean up, so they were a really good choice for this plaza space.
And the other ones, like, I mean, was, I guess what I, it's just funny, we as a city have made a real effort to promote native trees.
Sure.
We have a native tree plant-in program. I'm on the board of VEPIS, which is a local 501(c)(3) that works with the city to plant natives, and so it's interesting to me that we would choose not to use any really native trees in there except for the service berry. So, and I understand why you chose them.
Right.
I just, like I said, I just have a problem with it, but I get why you chose them.
Well, I would assume that the arborist.
Yes, I worked with Kate, the arborist, and she was on board with all the selections.
Thank you.
The last two major changes only come into effect if the water feature is funded and that option is selected. So the first kind of major change is the addition of the Water Quality Management Dome Pack with the fountain option. Oops, there's a picture of it. It's about three and a half feet high, and it, we've had to, the water quality management system is for the fountain. It has all the pumps, all the filters, all the chemicals that need to be circulated through the fountain, and you have to find a place for that. Originally, we were going to put it in the utility kind of shed area that we had designated, but when building permit reviewed it, they had some concerns with putting that equipment adjacent to an existing building. They wanted it pulled away from the building, so we had to rework that and go into like a packaged system that is provided by the fountain manufacturer, and it's an all-in-one system. It's about three and a half feet high, and it can be painted to look more artistic, so we could have maybe the Arts and Humanities Council come up with a way to possibly paint this, have an artist paint it and make it look more attractive. What we've done is we've put it on the same grade as the parking spaces, and then we have the stone, the stone wall that goes around it that is about two and a half feet high, so it'll shield it from, if you're looking, if you're in the plaza looking north, because the wall is two and a half feet high, and then the area behind the wall will be planted with shrubs that will grow to about another two feet high to shield that dome pack, but it will be visible from the parking lot. We have wheel stops in front of the parking spaces, and we're also planning to put three bollards in front of this so people can't crash into the dome pack.
Have we thought about kids climbing on it?
It's stainless steel. The doors are stainless steel, but you're right, I guess kids could potentially be climbing on it and put dents in the doors.
Well, and I'm also just thinking a two-and-a-half-foot-high wall is also something that kids will climb on, so as long as we've thought through how that's, like, it'd be a bummer to make this park and then be like, oh dang, this is a dangerous area for kids.
Well, the wall, the two-and-a-half-foot wall is really all of the planter walls, and those were designed to be seat walls.
All right.
So they'll go around, all, the seat walls go around each planter area, and it was designed to give more opportunities for seating.
So you show a picture of the inside of this system, but you said it could be painted. Is this just for our benefit to see what's in there?
Yeah, that's just the picture I had. Those doors roll down and then they're locked because you don't want people going in there. But yes, it can be painted.
Okay, so this is, there's not like a glass we're looking at here?
No, no.
It's just open air and then the doors pull down?
The stainless steel doors roll down, and then there's a lock that goes on that to keep it shut.
Okay.
And then the last change that was made from, when you'd seen it last, was with the lighting plan as it relates to the fountain. With the fountain, there's no codes that relate specifically to an interactive water feature, so it's treated as a pool. So you have to meet all of the pool code requirements, and one of those requirements is that you have to keep any overhead lighting 10 feet from the surface of the water. So without the fountain, we have these kind of festive globe lights that crisscross across the site that are hung from cables, taut cables. So with the water feature, as you can see here, we've had to kind of remove some of those lights from around the water feature, but we've placed at the kind of boundary of that 10 feet, we've placed four separate downlights to give additional lighting, and if the fountain goes in, there are lights within the fountain that shine up, so that space will still have light. It's just different than if we don't have the fountain. We'll have that, we'll have the continuous string lights across the entire park.
Kim, excuse me. When will the decision be made whether there will be a fountain or not? Because right now it's an add-on, right?
Exactly. Once we go out to bid and we get all the prices for the add-alternates and we see exactly how much just the base park is versus the add-alternates, and then the Economic Development Authority can decide at that time to provide funding. If we're approved tonight, we can go out to bid by the end of the month, and we expect to have bids back by the end of December. And I know last time I was here, the Planning Commission was not in support of the chalk wall. I know there were concerns over maintenance and concern over, you know, negative messages being put on the wall, so I did do a little bit of research. I talked to the Thomas Jefferson Center for Freedom of Expression. I talked to their executive director, and what he said for maintenance is they just wash it down twice a week with a hose and a sponge, and they replenish the chalk as required. And I did talk to our Recreation and Parks Director, and he said washing down the wall and replenishing the chalk is necessary really isn't a burden. They can do that once a week. The other concern was, you know, inappropriate messages, and one of the things that the executive director said is there are inappropriate messages that are put up, but people just erase them. They do not censor it, they just handle it by washing it down twice a week, but, so the good that comes out of it and the positive messages and the way people connect to each other has been more of a benefit than any of the negative comments that have been put up. So staff and I discussed this, and we really, we wanted to try to give it a go. We think this is a way for people to engage with each other, to connect. It's a way, it's something to draw people to the park. We can change up the question, change up the theme. It's something that, in the park, that could be changed and used as a draw, you know, on New Year's, on first night, you could put up, you know, whatever your New Year's, what are your New Year's resolutions, or, you know, for the, at the start of school, you know, what I want to do before I graduate, or you could come up with a whole host of interesting things to put up on the wall, and if it's a failed experiment, we can take the panels off. It's not going to destroy the wall to remove the panels. But if you're still, if I haven't convinced you and you're still not for the wall, it's a simple change to the plans to knock it out.
No, I think it's fine now. I think my, our main issue was who was going to be maintaining it, and since you've talked to Wrexham Park and they'll maintain it and wash it off, I think that, I don't think it's that big of an issue.
Okay.
It was mostly because we had this wall, but no one knew who would be in charge of it.
Okay, okay.
I was always supportive, for the record.
Oh.
No, I think you, I think you should just put a sign that just says that it is being washed down on a regular basis. That way, if someone's offended that you've erased their political message or something inappropriate, it doesn't look like it's a targeted erasing, but rather like this is regularly maintained, just to say it so that I think you avoid any conflicts about picking and choosing which messages you're erasing. But otherwise, I think it is a very interesting concept and it sounds like a pretty inexpensive experiment.
Let's hope for the good, come on.
Do we have any other questions on this? Are you finished?
I am. I just wanted to say that, you know, we hope to start construction the first quarter of 2018 and finish it up late summer, 2018.
Great. Any other questions? I have one or two here. So on this rendering, the, it's hard to tell, but it looks like the switchgear is, the transformer, rather, has some sort of painting on it. It's, it looks, it doesn't look green.
Right.
It looks artistic. Is this the plan to have it painted, or?
We do, we do want to have the painting refreshed. We are not allowed to paint it and make it decorative. We have to, we can paint it like a beige color to make it blend in a little bit more, but we're not allowed to make it look like it's not the switchgear. Because we spoke with Dominion Energy, we spoke with them about this early on in the process, about what we could and couldn't do with the switchgear, and their point was they, they're guys, if there's an emergency and they're sent out in the field, they need to know that this is a switchgear. There can't be any question about what is this thing. So we are not, we're not allowed to paint flowers or fish on it.
But just to be, I mean, I see them painted all over the place.
They're not allowed. And Arlington, you know, we put it out.
Alexandria, they have them all painted.
Yeah, they're not supposed to. They're.
Well, maybe they just painted them then, I guess.
Then they could make you paint over it, and then it's just a way.
There's several that have been painted for at least four years that I've driven past them.
That's right.
We'll just have the teenagers, when they're done with the chalk part, go over and paint that, too.
Okay, so this is showing beige, is the plan to make it beige?
Yes.
Okay. Hopefully it doesn't blend in too much for their workers. If we're not, if we're not putting the dome water, the water treatment in the utility space, what is now going in that space?
That's our electrical panels, our electrical meter, so there is still.
Does it need to be the same size? It's, because it's now, it's still quite large.
Right.
And cuts off area of the park that you could be using if it's just some electrical panels?
Yeah, well, that, it was, the thought was that it could also be used for storage. It will have a locking, a door and a locking gate on it, and it has a chain-link roof on it, so nobody can hop over the wall and hide in there. I could see if it's possible to shrink it, but I think it's really part of, the shape of that wall really is just part of the overall design of the plaza. You know, it's a whole line that comes straight down. If you were to cut it off and have, just have this open space?
I'm not suggesting it's open, but that it would be, I mean, to use, if you need to store chairs and tables in there, fine, but if it's more park space for the community, then it seems to me that we shouldn't just have open, you know, enclosed inaccessible space for the sake of it was there before when we thought we were going to put something there.
So there's also irrigation. Our irrigation, some of our irrigation equipment will be stored in there, so it's not going to be totally useless space. We have the meter, the electrical panels, and the equipment for the irrigation.
Okay.
But the follow-up on what you just said, I still think that the wall and off of the Unity Club just takes a whole bunch of property out of the park, and I just don't understand why we can't put a sidewalk along that wall and not have the wall, because it really does take a big chunk of park away. And I just think it's not a, it's not a very friendly wall towards the Unity Club.
I guess the, one of the main comments I got when I was talking to people about the project is smokers. What are we going to do with all the smokers? How do we keep the smokers out of the park? And honestly, this was my way to try to give people an area to smoke that was not inside the park. It's convenient to, the door for the Unity Club, which is where some of the smokers come from, and they're welcome to use the park. Anybody can come into the park and smoke. We can't limit it, but I was trying to provide an area for people to smoke that wasn't part of the main park.
Well, maybe we could shorten the wall a little bit so that, currently, for them to get to the park, they have to walk into the parking lot around the parking spaces and come in, so it's very clear we don't want them in the park, and I just wonder if, no, it is. I mean, look at this. I just wonder if we couldn't like at least have an open in, like where the green is, like there's that dark green between where the pump will be and the patio space so they could at least walk into the park at that point. I just, I can't, I wouldn't currently vote for this because I just feel like this wall is not friendly. It's very negative.
Conversely, I've wondered, is there a different way to get into the Unity Club that doesn't come right out of the public park?
No, and that's part of the problem. Their door opens right on the property line.
Is that our problem or their problem?
That's their problem. So we've tried to accommodate them. Obviously, I don't want to shut off access to the Unity Club, but if a private developer owned this parcel of land, they could build right up to the property line.
Right.
So we're trying to be friend, we are trying to be friendly and maintain their access, give an area to smoke without being in the main part of the park, but if they want to go into the park, they can.
Well, what do you think about the concept of at least openness up of that one section? So that if they do want to come in the park, they don't have to walk into the parking lot and come around all those cars.
I think you'll encourage smoking in the park.
Yeah, yeah.
I think the smoking concern is real.
Well, I mean, people are going to smoke in the park anyway, and they may not be from the Unity Club.
Well, but, I mean, the reality is today, that's what's happening there.
Unless we're going to designate a non, I mean, can we designate a non-smoking park? Or is it because it's outside, we can't?
It's not allowed. No, you can't.
Okay, so people will smoke there regardless.
But I'm guessing there's a higher percentage of Unity Club.
Because there's bars near there.
However.
Right now, people smoke.
However, Parks and Rec is having a project being looked at to try to have friendly signs about please don't smoke or something. They're using all the laws and making sure that's what the two high school students are working on.
Okay. That, I mean, I would, yeah, do you think you could do a friendly sign that says that children are here and maybe it would be best if you not smoke or something?
So, the other question I had was, what the proposal said, if the fountain is going in, then the logo is shifting to this stage.
Correct.
And I didn't understand why those things were related. So if, if the fountain is coming, then I think it's quite nice to have the logo where the fountain is.
The, and we looked at a way to try to provide, put that logo in the fountain. So the fountain is a big concrete circle with jets.
Right.
And if you try to fit that logo or you cut it out of metal, how do you get it in there, and then how do you work that in with all the different holes that are squirting out? It just, it was extremely complicated, and there wasn't a good, there wasn't a good way to do that.
So it looks like, so I'm confused a little bit. On the rendering, I don't see any of this, concrete that you're referring to. I'm not disputing you.
Yes.
I just don't see it.
They showed it, honestly, in a previous, in the previous versions, they had the concrete in there, but it is that circle where the, where the fountain goes is concrete. Don't have the previous renderings, but it is a 16-foot radius concrete.
Okay, so it's fine. I mean, I'm a big fan of this fountain. I appreciate it's dependent on cost, but. But this rendering, if it's going out, is misleading on that part of it. So, we should have that denoted as concrete for the public. And then, this sign, I guess my final question is this sign that says Little City Plaza 2018. It, it, like the font and the size of things, again, I don't know if it's a suggestion. It just seems off.
It's a suggestion, we don't know the name, we have to name the park first. So, I can't really design the sign itself until we name the park.
I see, we're going to have an official name for this. It's not called the Little City Park.
Correct. So, once we come up with a name, I can design the sign and that'll go through the AAB for approval.
Please, please, please.
So, how are we coming up with that name? Is that a public process?
It is a public process. There's a, there's a code, there's a section in the code about naming a park and that is something that the Recreation and Parks Department is going to take the lead on.
Okay, all right. And so, that's just a placeholder there. Got it. All right, that concludes all my questions. I'm excited about the construction of this.
I had a quick question about the fire pit.
Yes.
Is that just the fire that's burning all the time, like the eternal flame? Or how does that work?
It's a, so it's not a fire pit so much as fire in a glass box. So, you don't want an, want an open flame. So, it's covered, so it's not a danger. But there is, it'd be a little, a push button that when someone goes, they can, they can push the button and it'll be set on a timer. And it could be set to stay on for 30 minutes.
So, you can't hurt yourself? I got kids, so you can tell I'm worried about how my kids are going to hurt themselves in this park.
Right, so it's...
That sounds really cool. I, just to touch on what Mike said, the, the rendering shows like flames shooting out of the top of this box. So, now that I know that, I won't worry about it. But if you, if you zoom in, it's hard to see.
It's enclosed in glass.
Yeah, so I, I'm just saying. I don't know who looks at these things. But otherwise, I don't think, I, I love seeing the flush tree pits. It's almost like we could do that on the streets, too. But I don't have any other questions.
Anything else? All right, great, thank you very much. I'm sorry? Do we have any comment from the public, Ms. G? You have any...
I do not have any speak... Do not have any speaker slips for this item.
Okay. We are supposed to take action.
The adjacent property owner is here. He did have a question. He didn't turn it to slip.
Yeah, go for it. Now's the moment, now's the time.
Sure, Bill Oshinsky. We own part of the 1 and 200 block. I was just wondering, the irony of giving the adjacent Unity Club owner an area for smoking or whatever use? It sounds, it sounds like you're taking public property and giving it to the adjacent owner who already doesn't have parking. And I understand the purpose for it, but it's ironic that you're giving them that property and you're asking me for an easement from my property.
Which one's your property? I'm sorry?
We, we own the alley, the CVS, the Dogwood, the Chinese restaurant, the 200 block.
So, we're asking for an easement for the pavers?
The alley for the pavers.
Right, right, okay.
Yeah, which is fine. I, I think, I think what you guys are doing is, is great. But when I looked at the plan and I saw the, the, the walking area for, that's being given to the Unity Club, I thought that was sort of ironic since Unity Club doesn't have any parking. I realize that they serve a public purpose, but they don't have any parking. They, at times have monopolized parking in that area. And now they're sort of being rewarded with the city giving them, I don't know, several hundred feet to basically use exclusively. It just strikes me as a bit strange.
On the sketch, your drive-in remains, right? We're just asking for easement on the side of it?
You, you, no, no, you've asked for, you've asked us to, to close the alley and allow you to put pavers up the alley.
Yeah, so I think you're right. I mean, I think it's, ironic is probably the right word. There's, I think, other objectives trying to be achieved. And you're right, they, there seems to be some portion of the parkland that's being accommodating to their entrance.
Sure, I mean, if it's me, it's your property, it's the city's property. I'm making that entrance to the Unity Club as small as possible to maximize the area for...
It's a fair point.
The, for the park, because the park's public. The, I understand giving them access to the building.
Right.
You shouldn't have to make the accessory any larger than, than necessary, which I, I still think accommodates your purpose.
Yeah, so, let me ask the designer, Kim, it just, it looks like it is, well, not looks like, it is diagonal and creates sort of a triangle as opposed to a straight alley. What was the thinking there?
From what I understand from the architect, everything is kind of coming from the center of the cir, of the circle on the stage and kind of radiates out. So, this being the focal point, kind of just getting these lines from, if you look, find it good.
So, it's interesting, it's noticeable from a bird's eye view, but standing there, I don't know that you're even going to notice that too much from in the park versus a street.
While she's looking, I do want to thank you for giving the easement or proposing to give the easement. I think that's, that will really be advantageous to the park, so thank you for that.
It's, so this is, this was just what the, the architect felt was important. So, if you see this line coming down, it meets the center of the, the circle where the, where the stage is. And then that kind of corresponds to another line that comes from the center that shoots across where the brick pavers kind of change into the plaza pavers. It's just, it's a design feature. It's, it's how, how he, how he created just the, the overall design of the plaza. Everything comes back to that center point of that stage area and radiates out. The other, the other issue was that we had to provide at least 10 feet from the doorway to the wall from our building code officials. So, the minimum distance that we were, had to allow was 10 feet.
And is it 10 feet?
Yes.
But then it increases as it goes up?
It increases as you go out to about, I believe it's 16 feet. So, 10, 10 feet minimum at the doorway and then it goes out to...
So, that's all for design purposes. It could just be straightened out.
It could.
But again, you know, I was just thinking, you know, after we were talking and after Mr. Oshinsky said something, you know, we could try just with the sidewalk and if there's any problems...
Well, it's a significant wall. I mean, I, I'm okay with it. I, I think that the point is correct. I want to know what the rationale, if it's simply design...
It's design, yes.
Then I'm...
And, well, combination, 10 feet.
Right, no, I know we have other objectives we're trying to achieve with the wall.
Right.
If, if the extra land, the, the small triangle between 10 feet and 16 feet is because of design and we think that's more welcoming to the Unity Club and the designer and the community has not spoken up about it thus far, I'm okay with it. But it is a interesting point that I want to know what the rationale is. So, that's, that's the rationale, design.
Yeah. Personally, for me, I, I would be curious what it would take for the Unity Club to generate a different exit that doesn't exit onto our land. I, I've kind of asked that and everyone said it's impossible. Guarantee it is possible. So, it may be difficult or expensive, but it's certainly not impossible. Short of that, I would favor 10 feet all the way there if that's what's code. I mean, I, I think that angle looks cool if you're a bird flying over, but if you're standing there, I'm not sure you're going to notice really that it's like the difference between that and if it went straight up 10 feet.
How long is, how long is the wall?
Oh, gosh.
From, from their entrance to the parking lot?
Yeah, approximately 80 feet from the stage. Like, so this includes the shed, the shed area?
No, I'm saying from, from the door, from that partition, the 10-foot marker.
Their door is probably 60 feet from the park.
Yeah. I just wondered if we could keep the angle from the circle to the edge of the, the maintenance area, then have it start to square off and then 10 feet across? And then have it end early, like where that dark green line is in some of the lines? So, and then have, that way, that whole trapezoid at the end could be part of the park?
Well, I, my...
Or, or the, or the pump could be moved over.
I'm sorry for that.
Yeah, sorry.
No?
No, I'm just, that would give us a little bit more land back to the park.
Oh, yeah, but the pump is back there, too.
Well, they could move the park, the pump over.
I think we're talking about a very small amount of area.
Yeah.
I mean, I think, I don't know if it, the cost of a design change and the delay for something that will net yield another dozen square feet or so, or 20 square feet. I think that it's not just a bird's eye view. I think actually there is some benefit at, at the pedestrian level, having, you know, drawing your attention to that part of the park. I mean, I think, I hear the point from the Jason owner, but, I mean, the reality is I just don't see that if we square it off, it makes that much of a difference at this late stage in the game. I mean, you know, they've been working on this for most of the year. At this point, if we don't go this way, we would have to reschedule it. We couldn't act on it tonight. We'd have to have them revise the plans, pay the consultants to revise the plans and come back again. I just don't know if it's that salient of an issue. I mean, the issue whether or not the door to that, I don't know legally what they're right is to access onto the park, that's another issue for another day, I suppose. Um, we haven't really talked about that thus far. But, I mean, I, I'm, I think the plan has improved significantly since we first saw it. We, we can continue to kind of micromanage it to death here, but I think that it's, I think that it's come a long way. I think it's, it's, it's going to be a benefit to that area compared to what's there today. I'm willing to support it right now as it is, so...
As am I, but just, just so that we get the number right, it appears by the math, it would be approximately 180 feet of additional space. If it's 60 feet long and six feet sticking out from, or 16 feet, you know, that's 360 if it's a rectangle and divide that by two, it comes to about 180. So, just so we get the number.
It's only six feet wide, but it's only, but it's only six feet wide.
What a wish.
Right.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
If I might, I think this is a minor kind of design issue which we could work on with the staff. Building Safety is currently reviewing the plans for this. I'd like to really double-check that 10-foot requirement. And I think we could, you know, you could approve this with the caveat that we could investigate this piece of the design in a little more detail.
I'm okay with it.
I don't think it's a problem.
I mean, if people...
I don't think it's a big deal to make a slight design change to investigate, perhaps...
If it's needed at all.
Yeah.
Maybe it's not needed.
Some of the issues that come up tonight are of importance.
Mike, you can come on up here.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Michael Novatny. I, I chair the Economic Development Authority. We're the sponsor of this project and also the funder of it once it goes into construction. Just to, you know, this is a valid point raised. I wanted to let you know that we opine on this quite a bit in the Economic Development Authority over various meetings. Kim, I should probably take a second, by the way, and thank staff, especially Kim Callahan. She came to almost every EDA meeting since she started this project to give us updates on the design and allow not only EDA input, but also public input. On this particular issue, I would just suggest a couple of things. First, the, as, as was noted, I think, but to call it out, you know, directly, the angle of that fence and where the chalk wall will go is actually intentional in that it, it adds visibility to the activity and it draws people into the park. If it's a flat fence and you're walking along Broad Street, I think you're less likely to see it and less likely to engage in it. And that's part of the purpose of that chalk wall. The other piece that I would say is I think there was a lot of sentiment and support for acknowledging, on one hand, we're giving up, you know, potentially some accessible public property, but also weighing the benefit of providing an ample space. There are a lot of people that come out of the Unity Club, providing an ample space so that that congregation can still take place without spilling over into the park. And as was noted earlier, the smoking is a real potential problem. The fact that we can't prohibit it strictly, it, it creates the problem. If we could prohibit it, we would have no problem. But because we can't, I think, you know, there was a lot of back and forth about how do we accommodate this? And quite frankly, I think staff and the designer came up with a really, really good balanced approach. And, and I think everybody's appreciative of that on EDA that's reviewed it. I would just offer one last thing. This project is, as was mentioned, it's been in design for some time. It's actually conceived back in 2014, so this is going on three years. We are really, really super excited. This is a great project. This is a transformative project for our, our small downtown. I, I hope that this will proceed with no delay. There are additional costs involved. There are, you know, delays just means that we could miss the summer season to have this plaza open and available to the public. We would like to put this out to bid this month. We'd like to be able, in our January meeting at EDA, opine on the pricing that came back. And if the pricing is higher than what we already authorized, we would have to opine on whether or not we would authorize additional funds. It's a critical step before construction. Provided that can take place in January, then we could proceed to construction in the spring. It would be ready for the warm season for everybody to enjoy. So, I really hope that this moves forward expeditiously. I think everyone's going to be really proud of this project when it's built. This is an awesome project, so I hope you'll support it. Thank you.
Mike, thanks for all the time and effort you've put into this. This is, I, I do agree, it's a very good project.
My name is Dan Tierney. I am the president of the Unity Club. And the Unity Club is near and dear to a lot of people's hearts and especially mine. We have thousands of people a week that come through our doors and seeking recovery and help. We provide that. And this is, it, it, it affects pretty much everybody in Falls Church. Because everybody in Falls Church knows people attend meetings at the Unity Club. And the, and the reason they do is for one reason or the other, whether it's, you know, drug addiction, alcoholism, Overeaters Anonymous, whatever it is, you know, we have these meetings. And the thing is, is people come there and, and they seek help and it works. And the thing is, is we're benefits to the community. The people that come to this club, they also eat in the restaurants that surround the club. And I'm, I've been a member of the club and I'm one of the founders of the club through, over 30 years ago. And then in that timeframe, I mean, the Islandsport Provinces, Broad Street Cafe, you know, the Beach Shack, all those places are filled with our attendees. You know, and, and the stores in the area. We bring people into the stores in the area and they purchase things. There's, and some of the things that I think that we bring, such as the smoking and stuff like that, I think those are the things that I think we can work together on. And, and, you know, I think together we can find, find some type of middle ground that can work for the city and can, you know, work for the Unity Club to still exist and do what we do. And, and, and thanks for what you do, Mr. Chairman. Appreciate it. Is there any questions to me?
I don't. I mean, based on the current design, what is the view of the space as it's currently designed?
We're fearful of losing spaces, parking spaces, as, as was mentioned. And I think, it's not just the Unity Club that's afraid of losing parking spaces. A lot of the other people that rent stores and stuff like that in the area, there are people come and use those parking spaces to, to go to the restaurants, to go to, you know, the stores to buy things, around hardware, the, the various different stores. The tenants, you know, all pretty much agree that the, the loss of parking spaces is, is not viewed as a good thing. The design of this park, I think it's beautiful. And the thing is, is I think that, I think you did an excellent job of funding together. But, you know, again, being selfish and self-centered, you know, how does it affect me? And the thing is, is how does it affect the community? Anybody that goes down there on Saturday morning and looks at this, this parking lot, they can see the amount of people that are parking there. You know, it's, it's overcrowded with parking already. If you take away those parking spaces, it presents a problem. The thing is, is how do we work with that? I think it's through, you know... I think it's through, you know, uh, walking and public and private partnerships, and we wanted to try to come up with ideas of how, how do we, uh, go over these hurdles. But, the parking, you know, if you take away those parking spots, it creates a park, we already have a parking problem in that area. I mean, if you take away parking, they have parking warrants, they have tow trucks waiting to tow people out of areas. I don't think that's gonna help it. I think if you get rid of city parking, you know, it creates a problem.
All right. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
You, you have a question?
No, I'm just wondering, and you're comfortable with having the wall, um, between the park and the Unity Club walkway area?
Yeah, I think, I think if it fits into the design and, and that's the way it is, yeah, I'm comfortable with that.
Okay.
And I think that, uh, when we started the Unity Club, uh, we started it as a no-smoking organization, so they, they couldn't smoke in the meetings. That's, you know, so the answer is, that was over thirty years ago. And the answer is, so these people, we had a smoking room back years ago, and then we moved, we totally eliminated the smoking probably about twenty-five years ago. For those people that are smoking outside are people that are, you know, a lot of them are new and they're coming into programs, and as they come in there, they still smoke, and some of that stuff, as they, as they, uh, deal with whatever issues they have, that stuff usually falls by the wayside as we get down the road.
All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yep. Uh, okay. We are taking action on this this evening. If someone would make a motion, and if there is others who would like to make friendly amendments, then you may propose those, but at this point, I think a motion as proposed is appropriate. We have to find the motion.
I don't think there is one. No, there is. This is a front of the law.
Yeah. I got it. I'll, I'll make the motion.
Yeah, go for it.
Uh, I'm gonna move that the planning commission approve site plan application 2017-0888 to permit the construction of downtown Plaza in the 100th block of West Broad Street, and also, I will move that, uh, we grant the following waivers. Uh, waiver of the perimeter parking lot landscaping with adjacent to non-residential properties, uh, to that shown on the plan. Uh, waiver, uh, requested to reduce the interior parking landscaping to that shown on the plan, and a waiver, uh, of the maximum percentage of, uh, anyone's species of plant to permit a maximum of fifty-three, uh, rather than the normal limit of fifty. That's the motion.
Can I get a second?
I'll second it.
Uh, do they want to have any amendments they'd like to make?
Would we still consider having amendment, the staff looks at the wall and if they could get some of that prop, some of that back into the park? Or do we not, do we want it to go to the left side?
I am not, I'm not interested in it, but you can make the amendment and-
Well, I'm just, is, is there any interest in it? I mean, because-
Based on what I heard, I-
As, as the maker of the motion, I, I, I think I'm leaning against that.
Okay. Well, Mr. Snyder had offered it, and I wanted to put it out there that-
What I'm trying to say is, I, I think the site plan should be able to go forward if there are minor changes to the design. That's something that can be accommodated. It's in review from the building department, so if it's eight feet or ten feet or some of these dimensions, you know, those are things that can be looked at. I don't think it should slow this down, but there is some flexibility on details like that, that we can handle administratively.
Well, I was, I heard that it was seriously considered, this design, and thoughtful. Uh, so I, I'm, I'm okay with this current motion, but, uh, it's, it's Mr. Krasner's to decide if. All right, so, uh, can I get a roll call vote then?
Ms. Hockenberry?
Yes.
Mr. Krasner?
Yes.
Mr. Rankin?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Ms. Teetz?
Yes.
Mr. Wodisco?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously with Mr. John absent.
Excellent. Thank you, everybody, the staff, EDA, everybody who's, uh, worked to put this together, so I think it's gonna be an excellent project.
Awesome.
All right, moving on to, uh, the Railroad Cotages Site Plan. Uh, the speaker slips are coming. Thank you. Uh, okay, let's start by hearing from the community on this. Do, do we have a staff presentation on this? All right, well, let's hear that first, and then we'll hear the comments from the community. We've heard it a, a couple times, so I didn't know if we were getting another one.
I'll make it quick. Um, so their request is, the applicant is requesting to construct a cottage housing development and to consolidate three existing lots into one lot. Um, the project location is at the eastern end of Railroad Avenue, and the proposed project would include the following: ten cottage units, each approximately fifteen-hundred square feet in size, one and a half stories, and twenty-five feet in height; one common house, approximately fifteen-hundred square feet, uh, one and a half stories, and twenty-five feet in height; and containing a kitchen, dining area, social interaction area, and guest room; shared open space throughout the site; clustered parking area with a carport; landscape buffers around the site; and improvements to Railroad Avenue, um, consisting of grass pave to widen it to eighteen feet, and improvements at the end of Railroad Avenue to provide space for a fire engine turnaround. The community would be age restricted for persons fifty-five years of age or older, including a provision that no residents shall be under the age of eighteen. Um, the city council approved the cottages' special exception on September eleventh. Uh, architectural advisory board and tree commission comments are included in the staff report. As part of the city council's special exception approval, they, um, approved a modification to allow for an eight-foot-wide easement within a required landscape buffer along Railroad Avenue frontage, which could be used for potential overflow parking. Additionally, as part of the city's long-term interest in obtaining easements along the south side of Railroad Avenue, this condition stated that the fire marshal may determine that the space could be repurposed for public safety vehicles if necessary in the future. The installation of the grass pave in this area would occur at the time of project construction, along with no parking signs, and the following standard, to determine if overflow parking is needed, has been included in the TDM, that within thirty days of the issuance of the tenth occupancy permit, uh, the condo association shall provide staff with a report specifying the number of occupants and number of cars owned by occupants which are regularly parked on the site. If this number exceeds thirteen, consider, um, alternative strategies would be considered, including allowing parking along the frontage. There is an additional standard that is requested by staff to be included in the TDM, and that is review and documentation of neighborhood input concerning parking concerns regarding, or during the periodic meetings of the TDM coordinator with city staff, with subsequent parking studies or usage of overflow parking area as deemed necessary. The applicant has received a minor modification to the approved CDP from the city manager, um, and this was to modify the model composition from three tenor model homes and seven Whitney model homes that was shown in the CDP to six tenor homes and four Whitney model homes, and that is due to, um, a higher demand for the tenor model unit from prospective buyers. Voluntary concessions requiring action prior to the site plan approval have been completed. The proposed motion for the site plan requests approval contingent on staff approval of pending items specified in the staff report, the planning commission's approval of landscape waivers, and a projection into a required yard, and a condition related to the WNOD gateway design. Um, and I'll go over these in a bit more detail. The pending items identified by staff are primarily amendments to or addition of notes on the site plan. Um, the first is to amend a note on the layout plan about the plantings adjacent to the WNOD maintenance shed to state that they'll be maintained by the condo association instead of the city. An update to the TDM to include the, um, standard that I had just spoken about. An amendment to an existing note to state, state that the applicant will install the flex, flexible bollards if needed instead of the Nova Parks. Um, update to the demolition plan to show that the portion of existing pavement is to be converted to grass as opposed to grass pave. An addition of a note that the new electrical line to the Nova Parks maintenance shed will be subsurfaced. Uh, the only non-note change is to reposition the bike rack to make sure it's a minimum of three feet from the adjacent driveway. There's three landscape waivers that are requested. Um, one is for the landscape buffer along the northern property line for curb cuts and emergency access that results in a reduced density of canopy trees and small shrubs than what are required by code. And a waiver requested for the landscape buffer along the southern property line because of the proposed sanitary easement, instead of, there's a reduction in the number of canopy trees and shrubs, but instead they will be replacing these with sixty-three evergreen trees. And then a waiver for the western property line for sanitary easement and request of the property, adjacent property owner to have evergreen trees. The planning commission is also requested to approve a projection of a porch and deck into a required side yard. Um, some of the proposed tenor models would be built in a reverse style. The Maho tenor unit on the end- is proposed for this reverse style, and there is a portion of the front porch and the side deck that are shown within the side yard setback. It's about six to twelve inches by nineteen feet, and then the deck is about six by twelve feet area within that side yard setback. Uh, the code does state that there are projections provided for, or are allowed for certain architectural features such as bay windows and chimneys, and then the section also states that stoops, porches, decks, and patios may be provided as shown on a site plan approved by the planning commission. Therefore, the planning commission may approve this projection as shown or amend as deemed The final item is for a condition that the applicant shall continue to work with the city and Nova Parks to achieve the western gateway design from the city's WNOD master plan, and the plantings agreed to would be maintained by the Railroad Cotages Association. Right now, what's shown on the site plan is what Nova Parks is willing to approve at this time, but the city as a overall effort to implement the WNOD master plan would like to see the complete, um, renderings that are shown in that plan. And there's also a request to consolidate the three existing lots into one lot, and the preliminary and final plots are included and up for action tonight, and they conform to the general regulations of the subdivisions chapter of the city code. At this time, I can take any questions, and the applicant is also here.
Uh, before I turn it over to the commission, can, can you, you have this particular, this is the tenor model or the Whitney model?
The tenor.
This is the tenor. So the other ones are the Whitneys.
There's more tenors now than previously shown. Um, originally, these two were tenors, and this was a tenor, but reversed, flipped.
Reverse meaning, wait, reverse meaning it was-
Reverse, like, the porch and deck had been over here.
I see. Okay, got it.
And then originally, these were all Whitneys.
Got it? That's what I remember.
Right now, they're requesting more tenors because that's what more people are interested in.
So, so do I see that on there or no? You gave a count, and I don't see that count on there.
They are, you can kind of, when you zoom in, you can kind of tell, like, there's, um, this is a tenor, two Whitneys, a tenor, two Whitneys, and then the two tenors at the end.
Okay, so now I see it. Got it. Okay.
So originally, um, this was a Whitney, and so, but having this in the original layout, there were porches right next to each other, or, you know, kind of facing each other. And so reversing this provides more privacy, but then there's this projection into the side yard.
And that projection poses any problem from a setback standpoint, or there's any issue?
It is within the, it is within the setback. I mean, there, this is the side that's along the WNOD trail, there's no, you know, immediate neighbors, um, and there would be landscaping still all along within that, so.
Is permissible by code is really my question.
The planning commission, that portion that, um, talks about stoops, porches, and patios, and decks, does have to be appro, is similar to a landscape waiver essentially. It does need to be called out and approved by the planning commission.
Okay. Okay. Uh, all right, any questions?
Just a question on that point. Has the zoning administrator determined that?
Yes.
So these are gonna be projections, it's not gonna be the actual wall of the house?
Right, it is projections. There would be foundational piers for the deck, um, for supportive, but the wall of the, the house would be outside of the setback.
The zoning administrator's determined that that's, that those count as projections under the ordinance?
Under that, that section of the code, yes. And, and it's the provision that the planning commission has the authority to approve it.
That's what I'm asking, making sure that, right, we have the authority to-
Yes, yes, I've talked to him about that.
It doesn't require variance?
No.
Okay.
All right. Uh, let me, uh, thank you, Ms. Aubrey.
I have one quick question. Is, are the two housing models just like different layout on the inside? I could tell they're slightly different shape, but is there a reason why one is more popular?
I love the planning.
I'm just, I'm just, like, are we gonna, like, someday regret having swapped all these 'cause there's some big difference that we didn't realize? You probably won't tell me that, but that's what I'm wondering, I mean.
From any public point of view, there's absolutely no difference.
Slightly different layout.
It, it, from what I understand, um, the reason they like one over the other is because of they like the kitchen layout better.
Okay.
But other than that, there's just no difference.
Cool.
The footprints are very close to the same, and when you flip them over, or you add, you know, it, we had to change our grading because there was like five square feet different over here instead of over there. That's all been done.
Okay.
Uh, all right, I, uh, would like to open this up to the public. Uh, I have two speaker slips. If someone else would like to speak, now is the time to fill one of these out. Uh, so, the first one I have is for Andrea Mucinski. Can you please state your name and address?
Andrea Mucinski. My address is 1000 Railroad Avenue, and we finally have construction underway for our new house after a really long and difficult process to get building permits from the city. We don't oppose the cottages. I just want to tell you that the twelve-foot-wide strip of pavement that you call Railroad Avenue is not adequate for the five houses that are currently there, and we only stop by once or twice a week, and that much is already very clear to us. We bought our property this January foolishly without considering the impact of it being located on a one-way street with two-way traffic. I'm guessing the buyers of the ten cottages may make a similar mistake. At the meeting here in July, I mentioned that the survey of our lot shows us owning the twelve feet of pavement in front of our house. Even the surveyor for the cottages agreed that our deed going back to 1897 does in fact show that the current road is within the boundaries of our lot. However, they also recognize a subsequent survey done by the electric utility who owned the land before the park authority that laid a claim to a portion of access road on our lot, but didn't record anything about that in our title work, so it doesn't show up there. Our surveyor says that these situations happen all the time, and the outcome of a challenge would depend on the amount of time and money that we're willing to put into it and the judge that we end up getting. I'm suggesting that the right-of-way study that the city paid for, commissioned, uh, that showed that the park authority owns the paved part of the road was done either poorly or corruptly, or both. I'm suggesting that the park authority may mistakenly believe that they've already given Railroad Avenue twelve feet of pavement, and now they're giving an additional six, excuse me, six feet of grass pavers, when actually there's evidence to suggest that they've currently given no parkland whatsoever to Railroad Avenue, and we'd only be asking for six or eight feet of pavement, which is less than the original twelve feet that they thought they'd already given us. I'm suggesting that you take another look at the property boundary issue with an impartial surveyor who hasn't made unethical backroom deals with city officials, and do whatever it takes to get us at least eighteen feet of pavement, which is the minimum for a safe and legal street. When I say safe, I'm not talking about the technical ability of a fire truck to drive on grass pavers and not sink into the mud. I'm talking about the many times per day road safety decisions that will be made by primarily senior citizen drivers right in front of my house. Before you approve a plan that increases the number of households on Railroad Avenue to three times the current infeasible number, please just make the paved road safe and legal. legal. I think it's within your power. If, if you think it can't be done, you probably haven't tried hard enough, and if you think it's too expensive, maybe you haven't considered the collective unhappiness of the 15 taxpaying households that's about to be directed at you, most of whom will be unaware of the historical baggage that comes with Railroad Avenue and will feel entitled to a safe and legal street. Just making the grass pavers actual pavement would solve this problem. It doesn't sound that hard to me. If you don't solve the road with now, this is not going to be the last time that you all hear about Railroad Avenue. Thank you.
Stephanie Dorsey, and you have amazing handwriting.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Stephanie Dorsey. I reside at 1002 Railroad Avenue. I'm here in front of you this evening to address some issues that have not been detailed out in the package of information available tonight. Myself, along with other neighbors that are impacted by this development, ask the commission and the staff and the applicant to take into consideration our request to hear additional details about three main issues. The first being details on the traffic and parking management plan during construction. Where will all the trucks and the workers park, considering that there is no parking along all of Railroad Avenue? This is also going to impact the residents on Fowler and Ellison Streets as well. The second issue is details for the plan to manage the parking and the traffic for three simultaneous construction projects taking place at the same time at the end of a one-lane dead-end road. This includes Ms. Mucinski's house, my house, as well as the railroad cottages. That's going to be an awful amount of vehicular traffic on a 12-foot road. The third issue are details about enforcement of the noise ordinance and the no parking restrictions. Who will be responsible for this? Who do we call when our driveways are being blocked? I, along with all the other impacted neighbors that aren't here this evening, we look forward to hearing additional details about this, as this will impact our daily lives. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't know, actually know the answers to a lot of those questions in terms of who to call and if your driveway is being blocked. I mean, I just don't know the answers. But in terms of the construction workers, where is the, what's the plan for how we're gonna get this built with...
May I address that?
Yeah, absolutely.
We've worked with staff on this issue. We laid out a construction plan where the area where the carport will be, will be our area to park the workers. I would suggest to you that we have a greater concern with the property next door and, and the one next to that. They have construction going on, but literally no place to park, with the exception, you know, maybe of two cars or something like that. So we're hoping that we can work through staff to work out some arrangements so that these cars and trucks can be parked. I don't know their construction schedules. We're hoping we can coordinate those as well. We, we hope to be able to start actual house construction in the spring, and before that time, it'll just be site work. So there won't be a parking issue because there'll just be equipment on the site.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, no, it's, sounds like a busy area come the spring. Any other questions? Any other comments you want to make?
I was, I was just thinking about the parking, the staging areas and everything. It sounds as if you got a staging area plan with the city, would it be possible then to also get the other two contractors involved with the city to get a staging? You know, I know it's, it's residential building, but, you know, private, private residential. But, you know, this is an unusual situation. Do you have any opinions on that, Mr. Kross?
Yeah, I mean, the, the site plan will, will have a parking management plan, and maybe they can attempt to coordinate that. I, I don't believe the city has any regulatory power to force that issue, but I think for mutual use of the road, I think it'd be beneficial to both parties.
It would be good to do something preemptively rather than having a major, big argument or blockage and everything along that line, because there's got to be cooperation somewhere along the way.
We can make that effort. I did want to mention out there in the voluntary concession, there's a requirement for construction and parking and staging plan that's got to be looked at and approved prior to the issuance of any demolition or building permits. So it sounds like that's, it's already in the works, and so it, it would need to be approved soon by staff.
Do we have an answer to who Ms. Dorsey can call if there's a problem?
So for the noise ordinance, I believe it's the zoning administrator. Unless it's after hours and then, like, noise, it's, I believe it's the police.
Call the police. Sounds blocking your driveway, you call the police.
And then blocking the driveway, it's, it's the police. So.
So, yeah, I think the answer to the question, for the noise, it's police, and they're the ones that have the equipment unless that's changed. It's been on the books that way. And then we have a parking enforcement officer for the parking, so, police, police.
Okay. I know their number.
The chairperson?
Yeah.
And I was kind of concerned with the, the first lady who spoke with us, because a lot of that was coming at us very quickly. Is, are the city attorney and everybody, is everybody aware of that situation?
Yes.
Okay. That's all I wanted to know. Thank you.
Just a follow-up. So we're aware of it, do we believe that the, some of the surveys have been off, at least in front of that one house at least?
I think the parties have agreed to disagree. I mean, it's just what she said. It's, you can have different surveyors come up with different results. Because it's not exact over the history of those properties. And so, I mean, we had a engineering firm do the survey, and, and the result of that survey is what we based the current road on, so.
And it sounds like at least Dominion thought they owned that property and, for a long time, so.
So, I mean, there's obviously discrepancies in it, in who's right or who's wrong. It, it would take a lot of effort to figure it out. We may never figure it out, so.
Quick, quick question just for the applicant, just on the stormwater issue, and I see the engineers here. I noticed that there's a very tiny fraction of nutrient credit that you're going to use through BNP. Was there a reason for that, why you couldn't meet all of it on-site, all your BNP reduction through on-site measures? That's, you know, it's a...
Unless it's a professional answer, that would...
Yeah, it's a small issue, but, you know, we're, in the vein of being environmentally progressive, I always like to, you know, discourage nutrient credit when at all possible.
Yeah, so we actually are treating, Antonet is Sherwood with Walter Phillips. So we are treating all of the impervious area on the side, including the homes and the driveways and the patio areas. And so the area that's left over, we would have to capture, like, the turf area or the vegetated area, and then send that to a facility in order to obtain the additional .07 pounds of phosphorus removal. So I guess in our minds, like, to capture the additional runoff and sending it concentrated to one area would be less beneficial than to add some vegetation to help the runoff reduction in that vegetated area, and instead contributing or paying the fees to purchase these nutrient credits offsite.
So it's only, so it's not for, right, so you're treating all of the impervious areas?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. That's, that answers it.
I follow all of that, I promise. In terms of these grass pavers, if the, in the normal, I know it's for the, the fire truck, in the normal course of driving, are these intended to be used, or they, it just, you know, it's just in case of emergency?
It's really intended for case of emergency. It will be signed "no parking" and "parking lane."
So if there's an issue, you know, with it being a relatively narrow street and two-car, you know, we need to make room because of conflicts, someone is able to go onto this grass paver, or that would...
I'm sure that will occur, but the intent is that they're primarily used to handle a fire truck, provide that width for a fire truck.
Will damage be occurring to the pavers? I mean, I, I understand the fire truck part. It's so they don't get stuck in the mud. But if, in the normal course of action, we find that cars need to utilize this, pavers, will they be destroyed? I don't really understand their structural component here.
Are these similar to the pavers that we have in the back of Cherry Hill that goes up to the small house back there?
I think they're different from that, but they are designed to handle the weight of the fire truck.
Right, because those, you drive on those all the, people drive on them all the time.
I mean, I think I know what they look like. I'm just, like, if it's...
Aren't they back here?
Yeah, there's some back here, too, where, behind the building, where the police park a lot, but...
So if we misjudge this in terms of the traffic, and they are needing to be used on a more regular basis, I'm trying to understand what the impact would be.
They would receive more wear and tear, and depending on, I mean, they would be, need to maintain more often. But it's hard to guess on how much that would be.
Yeah, I mean...
If, if they were used very frequently, it would kill the grass. It would have nothing to do with the supporting plastic tiles underneath. Those are designed to handle, and they do handle, they've been tested for many years, an 85,000-pound fire truck. So the worst case is, we've got to go out and plant more grass. Let me also, though, take this opportunity to point out that I live on Timber Lane. It's a pretty wide street, residential street, but I guarantee you that every night when I go home, and pretty much every morning when I come in, I have to stop because there are cars parked on both sides of the street. That happens in virtually every street in the city. I'm sure you all experience it. People show courtesy to one another, they pull over a little bit, it all works just fine. Railroad Avenue is no different. The main difference is there are no cars parked on either side. There's a 12-foot right away. There was a lot of research done when the city accepted the 12-foot railroad avenue into the city's road net back 12 or 14 years ago. But I just want to point out the fact that people are going to have to edge over a little bit, be courteous to one another on Railroad Avenue is no different than it is everywhere in the city.
All right, thank you. All right. Any other discussion we want to have on this? If not, I will entertain a motion. You may be...
You're the winner. I think if I tie that...
I think I'm, I have it online here. I don't know if anyone else has it, but... So we're, everyone's there? All right, okay. I guess I propose to approve the site plan application number 2017-0220 to permit the construction of a cottage housing development contingent upon administrative staff approval of any pending items specified in the staff report under the technical review section, and with the requested landscape waivers, requested projection into side yard of porch and deck, and the recommended conditions as follows. One, waiver requested for the landscape buffer along the northern property line to be reduced with a density to that shown on sheet C-1204 of the plan. Two, a waiver requested for the landscape buffer along the southern property line to be reduced with a density to that shown on sheet C-1204 of the plan. And three, a waiver requested for the landscape buffer along the western property line to be reduced with a density to that shown on sheet C-1204 of the plan. It's a popular sheet. Four, a request to allow approximately one foot of the front porch and six feet of the side deck of Unit 3, number 1024, to project within the northern 10-foot side yard setback. And five, the applicant shall continue to work with the city and Nova Parks to achieve the western gateway design from the city's WNOD master plan, and the plantings agreed to by Nova Parks would be maintained by the Railroad Cottages Condominium Association. In addition, approval of subdivision application number 2017-0220 to consolidate three lots into one lot located in the 1,000 block of Railroad Avenue with a bunch of RPC numbers that are in the motion. The end.
Written motion. I'll second it.
Okay. Any discussion on that, that long motion? Okay.
Very well done.
Ms. G, can you take a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Hockenberry?
Yes.
Mr. Krasner?
Yes.
Mr. Rankin?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Ms. Teetz?
Yes.
Mr. Wodiska?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously with Mr., with Mr. Jean absent.
All right, thank you. Item eight on the agenda, other business, we have none. We have already approved the minutes. And now on to the Planning Commission reports. Does anybody have any Planning Commission reports?
I'm just going to report briefly. The Village Preservation Improvement Society had their fall meeting on Sunday at the American Legion Hall, and the discussion was about retail, like, kind of going through the past of retail, talking about, like, when we finally got some mixed shoes in, the Broadway, you know, we had these empty lots and, and some of that, but also talked about the future. And Mr. Stevens pointed out earlier, we were talking about this, that one of the big points that came out is that, and these were past EDA reports, that they really felt that the retail that people want, you know, you talk about, like, they want to buy a shirt, which hopefully you'll be able to buy a shirt at Target when they open in a few months, but was that that kind of retail only came if we had some, about 20,000 people. That part of our problem in terms of getting that type of retail is that we didn't have enough people. So I guess, I mean, I think around, we're about, like, maybe 14,000 now, so we're, we have kind of moved up a little bit. But, and I think that having a Target come in is, if that does well, that may generate more of that type of retail. That's kind of, we needed a test market. And, so anyway, I just want, it was, it was a very good discussion. There were a lot of questions. Ed Salzberg was the, the person who did the history, and then there were council members there. I was there, other people were there, and when there were questions he couldn't answer, he would just pick on people in the audience and say, "You probably can answer that." So it actually generated a lot of discussion, which I thought was a great way of doing it.
All right, thank you. Mr. Stevens?
Yeah, just briefly, the Environmental Sustainability Council had their Green Schools Forum a couple of weeks ago, which provided a lot of very worthwhile information, and summaries of the presentations, including the architect from Discovery Elementary and Arlington, and some other schools are online in the ESC's website. And I think it'll provide information of interest to us when it comes time to look at the site plans for the, for the high school.
I'm sure it will. Thank you. Lindy, or you have anything?
I haven't done anything lately.
All right. All right, real briefly, Mr. Rankin and I attend this economic working group meeting for the campus project. We met prior to the referendum passing, and I'm pleased personally that it did pass. But in that, our latest meeting, one of the things we talked about, or primarily what we talked about, was the coordination structure for this project. And I believe this evening, City Council was discussing this in some detail, so some more information will probably be available to those who are interested. But essentially, what, what the idea was, was create a coordinating committee that have representation from both the school board and those interested parties on the school, on the school side, and then similar from the city side, and try to come up with a committee that could move more adeptly and quickly to answer questions and, and make sure that there is some synergies between the two groups and, and objectives. There was a lot of discussion on that, a lot of, you know, what, what are the goals and objectives? And through that process, and through that discussion, we, we came up with a preliminary plan that will be, you know, further refined here, again, I think this evening with City Council, that essentially has, it looks like about 10 people on this committee, and from that, hopefully, they can, they can make decisions that, make it so that this, this project is well-planned, or we continue our, our, our planning on it. project is well-planned, or we continue our, our, our planning on it, so that we can get the outcome we're all hoping for. So it was a pretty interesting discussion and thinking through various scenarios, but I think we're, we're on the right track here. I don't think it's been formally adopted yet, but I like where this is heading and everybody trying to work together, and we got a lot of support from the school superintendent on, on the way we had structured this. So it looks to be a good group at this point. We will have one member from the planning commission on this committee, and I don't know how that gets appointed or how that gets divvied up. On the Economic Working Group, we had two, so this is less representation, but we will manage. All right, that's the report from that, and those meetings are... When's the next one?
Next Friday, maybe?
Week from Friday.
A week from this Friday.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah. So anybody's welcome to attend, seven thirty in the morning on Friday. Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
Is there any way? I, I am increasingly worried about, you know, making sure that the schools in particular in their request for qualifications and everything else they're doing, that they include in their request the need for high-quality environmental, geothermal, everything that we've talked about, you know, quite often as far as what we'd like to see up there. And we are one body on the city side, and I don't know how passionately the school side is about that. I still haven't gotten a good reading from that. And it just concerns me that if they don't ask, you know, in their request for qualifications and information, you know, will they get that?
Have you, have you seen something or indications that that's not the direction? I mean, we just had an election on this, and I, this, I believe, was discussed. But have you heard something that they're not into the, they're not enthusiastic about the environmental issues? I know, I know Tim is indifferent, but...
Yeah, Tim, back me up here, Tim.
Well, we'll definitely, just not myself, but all of the ESC, this was a big issue at their last meeting, to, to really kind of ramp up the outreach, to make sure that it's not, "Don't call us, we'll call you," on that, show up at school board meetings, to talk to Dr. Noonan and the staff as, as often as we can. So there will be a lot of outreach. Part of the problem is that right now, this first step, the RFP for qualifications, is really kind of behind the veil. So we don't know exactly how the scope of work is going to be described. That's going to be critical. Are the key things that we want to see in a high-performance building, are they extra add-ons, or are they part of the integral scope of work? So we won't know that right away.
And I think there's a real fear here, if you know the history of MEH.
Exactly.
In that they put together a committee who worked very hard and came up with some really great ways to make the, the building more environmentally friendly, more sustainable, more energy efficient. And when they went to, you know, put their report in, they were told it was too late. And that, so we definitely have to get the timing right this time.
Yeah, I, I'm really worried about the possibility of us not reaching, I hate to say reaching for the stars, but this is something that I think as a community we really value. And, you know, and there hasn't always been the school participation in a lot of these meetings, such as the green building, and, you know, and some of the candidates that were, the candidates that were up for election and were elected were at a couple of them. But I just want to keep that somehow, make sure that that passion and that need for, that quest is kept.
All right, well, I haven't heard anything that it wouldn't be, and, I mean, when we came up with the design, the...
Feasibility?
The feasibility, I mean, the, the, the building was angled in such a way to be energy efficient. We saw, this planning commission has seen at least two presentations on the obvious economic benefits of the geothermal. So I have not heard any word otherwise. I mean, it's always a concern. I think certainly we have voiced our support for it as a, as a group, but any outreach you can do, it sounds like a good thing, because it sounds...
And I realize that, you know, a lot of the things with Mary Ellen Henderson, it was also due to the fact that they had to go through Fairfax Planning Commission, and they would not allow certain aspects of the plan to face in the right directions and, you know, with the cellar and all that kind of good stuff. And it looks like our great leader is waving at us.
I just wanted to mention at the conclusion, towards the end of the work session downstairs, Councilman Dan Z spoke in great detail about the need to be aspirational and to put those things in the RFP, the RFQ, I guess it is. So any rate, it was, you can watch that on the, on the work session tape, but there was a lot of discussion about that at the end of that work session.
Okay.
Okay.
And I also wanted it on record.
On the record.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other? Awesome. Planning Director Report, and then I did get, you know what, actually, before we do that, I did get Speaker Slip, and it's related to what we just talked about. So, Mr. Cash, you are up. Can you tell us your name and address for the record?
I am Thomas Cash, three oh one West Broad, apartment three three nine. I am actually here representing the ESC, the Vice Chairman currently of that council. Just wanted to go over a little bit about what Ms. Hockenberry was referring to and Mr. Stevens with the Green Council Forum. One of the issues that we're pushing, not only is to be environmentally sustainable and friendly about this, but the Discovery School has shown a marketable increase in student performance, as well as lower overhead and maintenance costs associated with that particular school. One thing that has been brought forward in rumblings in and about round town to the rumor mill, as you know, it will stir, especially with the referendum that has just passed, is the first thing everyone's wanting to do is starting to cut costs up front. Unfortunately, from the data that Discovery School presented and is available on the website, on the ESC website, that would be a big mistake, because the payback is well under the bond length. So I would encourage the council, if you've got time, take a cup of coffee, go through all the fund documents, and, and please review it, and the ESC is always welcome to answer any questions you all have at any time. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I, I mean, if, if you've listened to our meetings, this, this group is overwhelmingly supportive of those, of those issues and those environmental policies. We don't have to say on it, but we have certainly been vocal throughout the last year or so on...
Right.
On those issues.
We've always looked at you guys as, as a friend, but we're always hearing your comments.
Yeah, absolutely.
You know, I think one of my biggest concerns is since I have a little bit of history with the city and with school projects and everything, we've always fallen short. We fought, we fell short on size with Thomas Jefferson. We were, we were supporting and urging them to build, build a bigger-sized building there. Now that opportunity is gone. On every single remodeling and everything, I've seen really poor quality of materials just to meet the budget, and I just think we've got a bad record with following through with our, really our needs. And dare I say, I'm, you know, still concerned about the remodeling of the city hall along those lines. We fall short of our goals.
Used to fall short.
Well, I don't want to fall short on this one. This one is one of my biggest passions right now, so...
All right. Moving to the Planning Directors' Report.
Just as an update on the upcoming schedule for December, we talked about on the agenda, we have a subdivision, nine hundred Lincoln Avenue coming up, and then we have the site plan-related variance for the library. We'll have a work session on that in a moment. Then we have a work session potentially on December fourth for the Broad in Washington, special exception, rezoning, comp plan amendment. And potentially, we, we could have the school campus boundary properties, future land use map designation, and also on that, if we'd like, or...
On the fourth?
On a, as a work session.
Oh, a work session, okay.
And then we could have that particular item possibly as a follow-up public hearing advertised by the eighteenth of December, along with one subdivision that we have scheduled for that, the one sixteen Great Falls on the eighteenth of December, along with the public hearing on the land use map. Or, or it could be that we defer the school campus boundary properties designation and map amendment work session to the eighteenth. So we'll, we'll figure that out. So one way or the other, we'll have those scheduled.
Excellent. Yeah, it sounds like we have a quorum for that, that meeting. Okay. Let's, since we've covered this stuff, let's adjourn, and then we're going to move into, for those who are interested, we are going to have a work session on the Mary Riley Stiles renovation, and you are welcome to stay. All right. Meeting is adjourned.
Coming to you early about the variances is to kind of understand the parameters, our design parameters, before we spend a lot of bond money and, and staff time designing something. So my goal is to use what was done as part of the master plan and get the variances based on the amount of square footage that we know we want before we actually start the detailed design. So if you look...
And there is a proposal to have a variance request go to the BCA in January?
Correct, in, in January.
So your input to that, of course, is an important feature of our discussion back and forth with the BCA.
So the variances that we'll need are for, the, the existing library site is in the OD district, and the requirements for maximum lot coverage is thirty-five percent, and the setback requirements for the front yard are twenty-five feet. So both on, from, and that's from the property line. So both on North Virginia Avenue and Park Avenue, the requirements are to be twenty-five feet back from the property line. And then, and then having thirty-five percent lot coverage. So those are more geared towards a residential district rather than a commercial use. With the library, the existing site is already at a seventy-six percent lot coverage of impervious area, so no matter what we do, we're going to need a variance on the lot coverage. As part of the master plan, there were two different options for the expansion. There was one to the west and one to the east. If we expanded to the east side of the site, then we lose all the parking. Nobody wants to lose the, the little parking that we have. So in discussions with the library board, they agreed that the expansion to the west towards North Virginia Avenue was the preferred option. So if we expand to the west, we only have a very, a small setback. The setback from the property line would be about six feet, five inches. But that's, the property line is in from the face of curb, so if you're looking at, in a, in a business district, they would measure the setbacks from the, the face of curb. So if we're looking at the face of curb, we have thirteen feet. The building would be set back thirteen feet. And then on Park Avenue, where we'd be moving the entrance onto Park Avenue, and on the Park Avenue side, the building already encroaches into that twenty-five-foot setback. We have, its existing is about seventeen feet, seven inches. And where the new entrance would be, we'd be asking for three feet, nine inches from the property line, and that's about ten feet from the back of curb. And then our lot coverage would be closer to eighty-eight percent versus the seventy-six percent as it is now. As I mentioned, the design that's done isn't, this is very, we haven't even hired the, contracted with the architect yet officially. We'll probably start that late January, they'll start designing. But before they start designing, I want to give them parameters on what they're designing to, because otherwise, we're, we're wasting our time. So that was my goal in, in coming to you tonight, to hear some, some of your feedback, if there's any feedback or input on, on the variances that we'll be requesting.
All right. Thank you. So the, my, my, the two issues are sort of as you addressed, the, the setback here and the fact, you know, that's only thirteen point one inches, thirteen feet, one inch, I'm sorry, and that it covers eighty-eight percent. But it's already covering seventy-something percent. I didn't remember your exact number.
Seventy-six.
Seventy-six percent. So from a, like, what are the, what are the, we need to grant a variance, but what are the risks of those two issues? I mean, risk is not the right word. What is the... Yeah, that's a good, much better. What's the trade-off here to having such a small setback and to covering the lot at such a high level? I mean, we, I, I guess that's, what are the, what are the trade-offs associated with this variance? Would be a simple way to ask the question.
Well, if we can get additional lot coverage, we can build the project, right? We can't go up a third level. As part of the master plan, they proposed a sixty-six, a six thousand six hundred square foot expansion. It was either to the west or to the east. So no matter which direction you go, you're going to be increasing your, your lot coverage. I guess the, the thought behind that is the thirty-five percent is really for, for single-family homes and, and residential zoning, and a, a commercial building doesn't have any lot coverage requirements, like in, in a B district. So this, we thought that this building would fit more with a business district than a, than a residential.
But I think you need to be careful about, I mean, you know, the rationale you're using, you know, to say that in the OD district, I mean, you know, the OD district has a lot of non-residential uses. It's a dangerous precedent to say, if you're saying because the OD district is more, that the requirements in there are more geared towards a commercial standard or residential standard, therefore, we shouldn't follow it ourselves, then what's to prevent a, a commercial owner to come in and say, "I'd like to request a variance, because I think that the setback requirement that's being applied to me in the OD district is, is unreasonable, and the city thinks it's unreasonable for itself." So it's just, I don't know if that really would meet the standard under, under Virginia Code for a variance for, for that particular one. Now, the fact that it's a non-conforming already, and you're just, you know, and there's this incremental change on the coverage, I think you have a better argument there, pre-existing non-conforming condition. But I think there may be other reasons why you could argue that it meets it, but I wouldn't say that it's a residential standard, because that's, the OD district isn't a residential district.
Right, there's no, no reason.
So I wouldn't call it that. And when you're talking about where you measure, you know, you measure from the property line, whether, wherever that may be. Whether it's, in, in a commercial district, you'd measure it on the property line, not necessarily from the curb, unless the curb happened to be the property line. So I think you need to be careful from a legal and technical standpoint. If the government itself, if we as the city are going to ask us our own selves for a variance, it's kind of a strange situation. It's unusual for a government entity to be asking itself for a variance. It's not unprecedented, but it's just unusual. So if we're going to do that, we need to make sure that we really hit the standards and, and, you know, and make sure that we're on sound footing, because you don't want a commercial owner to, kind of, granted, every case is different, but you wouldn't want someone else in the OD district to come in and say, "Well, you know, the city doesn't, feels it's a hardship to have to follow the OD district standards. You know, I feel it's a hardship for me, too." So that's the only caution, I would say. Make sure that you make it as specific as possible to this property, as unique, make it, you know, and there are some very unique factors here, given when this was built. I don't know what the rules were at the time that the original library was built, and how, how it conformed or didn't conform at that time. I suspect, I suspect it's changed. I don't know, Mr. Snyder, as a, did, was the OD district in place in nineteen, when was the library built, in the fifties?
Fifty-seven.
I don't know. Was it in place then with the same rules as today, or has it changed over time?
I, I, I don't know. I'd have to check.
It'd be worth looking at the history of that.
I think there are some, I, I know of some OD buildings that don't meet this twenty-six percent, so, you know, I think there may be some problems with that district, just in terms of coverage.
There, there have been variances, that, there was a variance granted in nineteen sixty-eight, and then again in nineteen ninety-one. It's just, we can't, it's not comparing apples to apples, because the code was different, so the variance that they got...
Sure, no, I, I fully understand that.
Exactly.
Right, and I think that's part of, you know, when you make your presentation to the BCA, I mean, I think it's just important to trace the history back. I just think if we're going to ask our own, ourselves for variance, you know, we should be on good footing to do it, otherwise, maybe we should change the OD district for everybody, which is one of the standards of the variance, that if, if it's a general problem across the whole district, then maybe the council should change the OD district to not, to, because it's not a specific problem here, it's for everybody, so...
Yeah, what he said.
One other thing that, just in terms of how this might get built, this is a detail, but we would hope to pull the sidewalk out at the corner of Virginia and Park where you don't have parking on both, on both the corners, so that you'd have a little more room for pedestrians. What, what would the goal be on the width of the sidewalk on both North Virginia and Park?
The goal would...
What can be achieved?
Right, if we, if we had a, the street along North Virginia Avenue, if we had plantings in the... in the, in the street, if you have 13 feet and you have a six-foot planting strip, and you have a seven-foot walkway between that planting strip and the building.
But then that puts it up against the street?
Right.
Because, see, I guess my, my thought is, I would rather give up parking spaces and have decent sidewalks around the library than vice versa, because I, we're trying to build a walkable city. And if it's like, hey, I can drive and park at the library, great, but I'm like, taking my life with my stroller in my hands when I'm going up North Virginia to try to get to the library. So I don't know what we, I mean, that sounds like a seven-foot sidewalk that's right up against the street does not sound.
Well, no, it would be right up against the building. So if you had a planting strip on the street, right, against the street, and then, so that would be six feet, and then you'd have seven feet between the planting strip and the building.
That's, okay, I guess.
There is no parking as you get to the stop sign. So one of the possibilities could be to pull those curbs out where you don't allow parking presently.
Right, but I'm.
At the intersection, and.
But I'm thinking like, let's say you live at West Broad, and you want to walk to the library, you're going to be walking up North Virginia, just want to make sure you got a wide enough sidewalk.
With a stroller.
Stroller, wheelchair, kids, whatever you got.
We also, as part of Park Avenue, would hope to get a good crossing, cross Park Avenue, connect with Cherry Hill Park as well. And you have, that whole intersection needs to get redesigned. We're looking at that as part of the Park Avenue improvements.
Street sign.
To connect the different parts of the civic campus, which this is actually a part of. If you look at the broader civic campus area, and you look at coverage with City Hall, Community Center, and the library, you're actually well under the, you know, those are all zoned OD, you're actually well under the, probably the 26%. But this property, isolated, is very high.
Yeah.
So that's one other aspect of this that we might look at in terms of talking about the BZA, because this is part of the broader civic campus at City Hall.
Yeah, I'm not too personally worried about the lot coverage. I think Mr. Krasner's point about make sure it's logical is good. And I love having the entrance go to Park. But what are we looking at sidewalk on Park?
There's 10 feet between the, so the, in the proposed condition, the entrance kind of juts out, and there would be 10 feet between the back of curb and where that entrance is. So you could have a 10-foot strip, pedestrian way along Park Avenue. And in, on North Virginia Avenue, if we didn't want that planting strip, if we wanted to get rid of the plantings and just make it all walkway, we could have a 13-foot.
Well, I mean, like, what's there now is sidewalk right up against the street, and there's street signs and stuff, and it's not, it's not great. So I like there being a buffer, but I just, I just want, I, like I said, if you're talking about, it sounds like what we're talking about is which side do we do the, if we're okay with the lot coverage, which side do we do the addition on? And I understand the desire for the parking, but I just don't want to regret it and feel like, oh, we're too close to the street over here. And sure, we have a few parking spaces on the other side, but.
Do we know how many parking spaces there are on the library in front of, on Park and then on Virginia? Are there, how many actual physical spaces are there?
The actual street parking? I haven't, I haven't counted those generally.
And how critical are those to the operation of the library?
I think the only handicap spots right now are on Park.
Yes, they are handicap.
Right. And there's also the drive-through on the east side.
That was, you're right, that was the other reason for expanding to the, to the west, is the thought was that we would reverse the circulation. So now we come in off of Park and head out onto North Virginia, and your book drop is over here. Thought was that you could come in off of North Virginia and exit onto Park, and then the book drop could be on the same side as the building and still be on the driver's side. So it would be a one-way, reversed in the opposite direction, would be, which would be great for city staff when they empty that, that book bin several times a day. They don't have to go back and forth, it'd be right next to the building.
Yeah. And I've got, I've got to have something clarified for me here. Okay, in the past, we've had architectural drawings come in, and showed the additions to the west or to the east. Now, what I'm hearing you saying, we're looking at setbacks again, and there's going to be a request for going out to another architect? Or are we going, I mean, are we still able to use those other plans?
Well, so we've, McMillan, Pazdin, Smith did the master plan. And then the city put out a RFP for architects when they were, wanted to design City Hall and the library. And we hired two architectural firms under a task order contract. Studio 27 or 29 is doing City Hall, and then BKV was slated to do the library. And at the past, the past board meeting on Wednesday, the library board voted to move forward with BKV. So now we're reviewing their proposal, and we are in the process of finalizing the task order with BKV so that they could start design. But no, we're not.
And that, I'm sorry, let me double check, that was the original architect?
No, that BKV is different than.
So isn't that a lot of money?
The, to do the design, they were only conceptual designs as part of the master plan.
No, but it looked like we had one done, and now you're going to put that aside and go out and get a new one?
No, we're not putting it aside. We're using that as our starting point.
Okay.
To move the design forward as we work with the library board and when their needs and wants.
Because it just, I hate seeing waste of money. On which side, you're going to have the new entrance on the Park Avenue side. Is that little thingy up there, is that the entrance on the Park Avenue?
This is just the conceptual entrance. Again, the, the final design and the, the look of the building.
Yeah, that's puny.
Lot to be, lot to be worked on.
You know, because I really like the, this entrance to the library now, because it's a little bit grand, and you can see the kids, you know, out there hanging around and stuff like that. So it's, it's rather large. That just looks very teeny-ty and not welcoming.
Exactly. And that was one of the things that was discussed at the library board meeting this past Wednesday, is possibly a wider, a wider entrance. So I would need to modify that before I went to the BZA.
Yeah, because that, that just.
One question might be if we were able to pull the curbs out on the corner, so that you didn't have such a tight, you can't park on the first 25 feet of those streets. And so pulling the curb out gives you a, can create a plaza-like effect on the corner of Park and Virginia, which if that entranceway were kicked over and were part of the new addition, you might be able to have more space around it. Right now, it's very tight to that curb.
Right.
The way this design shows it, which looks kind of awkward, so.
So there's going to be a new design?
This was just a conceptual idea to start the discussion about the variances and what maybe the parameters of the design could be. Because again, I don't want to do a full-scale design and then come back and.
Right, right.
And have to, have to backtrack based on getting the variances.
As what's been said here, I do, I know Andy mentioned a better welcoming towards Park and, you know, with Cherry Hill, since it's, was originally a part of the same property and everything like that. It would seem like that would be architecturally really important.
Right, and the architectural design, the details of that still have to be designed and vetted through the board and the community.
I thought it was pretty well put together the last time it came to us.
As part of the master plan?
Yeah.
Those were, those were conceptual designs that will keep moving forward based, as our basis.
And we go on and on.
All right, so in terms of guidance, it sounds like, or let me speak for myself, that I don't have a problem with the 88% coverage. I think that Mr. Krasner's comments about how it's justified, it needs to be, you know, well-thought-out.
Okay.
I thought he made a lot of good points on that. So I don't have a problem with that variance personally. And I agree that it should be on the west side, based on what we had seen earlier, really. I mean, the refinements about how big the entrance is and things like that, certainly open to those kind of modifications. And I don't love the setback, that's only 13 feet, one inch, but, you know, trying to maximize the library expansion, so, I mean, I don't have a problem with that as far as guidance is going. I mean, the flower building on West Broad Street was a lot of discussion, and that was 14 feet, and everybody felt that was really close. But that was on a, you know, major road as opposed to on Northern Virginia. So it's close. I mean, I have a, you know, that flower building, it's, feels close to the street, but again, that's a major corridor. So I, I don't love the setback, but, you know, at the benefit of gaining a larger expansion for the library, which is what we're ultimately trying to do here, I don't, I don't have a problem. So if anybody else wants to give their guidance and make sure that we're heading in the right direction, please speak up.
Yeah, I'm, I am a little bit concerned about the, how close it is to the street, especially on the North Virginia Avenue side. But I also feel like the drawings we have aren't really clear, like visually, like of how it would look. And I'm not sure you can go in and spend that money until we have more design, I understand that part. But I just kind of look at it, I mean, we, we actually changed our commercial buildings from 14 to 20.
Right.
Because 14 didn't look good. So I think that's one thing you guys have, I don't think you should be comparing it to a commercial building, I don't think that does you well. Because we make all our commercial buildings, give us lots of space and vegetation. I don't know, I guess I'm okay with the, the 88% or whatever that is. I don't have a problem with that and everything like that. But I definitely, I think, I think we need to feel like there's going to be enough sidewalk.
Okay.
Yeah, I would say be very specific in the future with how wide the sidewalk is and what it's up against.
Right.
And is there, are there signs in the sidewalk? Are there obstructions? How much is it, we talk about that clear.
Because, yeah, the current sidewalk, there really isn't a lot of room, and you're up against that wall.
Right, and there's street signs in the middle.
So you can't, like, in other places, you can kind of step into a yard or.
Well, in this rendering also is a little bit, I was going to ask, because in this rendering, it has, because it's on grade, it's like the building, and there's windows down, and it almost looks like there's a space and then some sort of a wall. I assume we're talking about, that's, I mean, this also doesn't, or maybe that's the grass strip, and then there's a wall. Anyway, like she said, it's hard to tell from the renderings what you're going to get with the sidewalks.
Yeah, even like a, more of a, even just a simple pencil drawing, but that's very clear about this is what the sidewalks look like now, and this is what we're, like, how close things are going to be. I mean, it doesn't have to be pretty.
Right.
Just something that's a little bit more clear than, I mean, these are very nice renderings and everything, but you really can't tell. And, ooh, and you can't tell on these either that well.
Okay.
You know, one other thing I was thinking of, just talking to Tim about, you know, we're always very concerned with coverage and stormwater treatment and everything. And this is an older building to begin with, and so I doubt seriously it has a whole lot of stormwater BMPs.
Right.
Part of it, probably nothing at all.
Yeah.
And so anything that is additional to it will have to have, you know, to make up for the amount of coverage. I don't know if you can make up in, in that small an area of an addition to make up for the entire coverage area.
Yeah.
You know, I don't think it's probably a possibility, but since, you know, well, it's like, you know, do as we say and not do as we do.
Right.
Which was something Mr. Krasner was talking about, that is a little worrisome along that line.
Okay.
Kim, I had a question. What are the functions that are anticipated to be in the new addition? If we were looking at a floor plan even conceptual, what would be in the west wing of this new building? And how would it address the street? Would there be windows, or is it staff space? Or what's, what's happening in that space?
The thought was that the staff space, the way it is now, is in the kind of, whoops. Sorry about that. The staff space was in the addition that was put in in 1991, so that really wouldn't change. What is going to be included in this, in this addition is the children's area, the teen area, the children's workroom, and then the, the circulation desk would be moved to, closer to the front. And then the thought was that we'd have a larger meeting room for storytimes or events. That would be where the existing children's area is now, because everybody seems to love that, that bow window with that, with that seating and that wonderful lighting, so.
Yeah, that's a beautiful area.
The children's area would be moved from that space into the, the top level of the new space, and then where the children's area and the teens area is now would be meeting room space for, for functions like, like story hour. And then on the bottom floor, there's a lot of seating there for, for reading, and then the, the stacks have been moved inward so that we can take advantage of the light for the, where the seats are, and move the, the stacks of books in, in towards, closer towards the center of the building where there's less light.
Is there any ability to shift that entrance over towards more to the corner, so that there's more room for it?
It would certainly impact the current interior design, so we'd have to rethink and rework that, but.
That's not your current entrance now, though, right? That's a big window there right now, presently.
This is the stairway, and the elevator is right here right now.
Right, okay. But, I mean, the area where the entrance is proposed is presently a big window. Is that right?
Correct, that's, that's the window where the teen, the teen section is.
Okay. I was just curious whether this is the final layout, or is this just a beginning?
This is, well, this is the, the start. I mean, the, the layout, you know, going towards the west, that would be, that's our box, right? The entrance has some flexibility.
The closeness of that projection to Park Avenue, leaving very little space.
Right.
You know, it's at the furthest point of the building, so if it were able to be shifted or redesigned, you would, you'd have more, it's a very awkward projection.
Right.
If you look at it from an urban design point of view, if there's any way to rework that so that you could put it where there's more space for it without impacting Park Avenue as much, it's just a, just a very awkward-looking design, in my opinion.
Yeah, and it looks like a guardhouse.
Also, I mean.
Doesn't work well.
If you, if you could, I mean, whatever, I'm not an architect, but if you could get that entrance more towards the corner, I mean, you know, maybe you stop the traffic, put the stop sign back a little bit so you get a crosswalk, a nice wide crosswalk. I'd take telephone pole. Anyway, I'm still going to Google Maps.
If the elevator's there, that's not going to.
Well, if the elevator's there, I don't know.
You don't want to move it.
I'm just saying, like, in some ways, it's cool to have the entrance on Park, but it's not, you know, you're going to go to the corner to get to Cherry Hill anyway, because that's where the crosswalk's going to be, so.
Well, this was helpful, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Work session's done, and we may all go home. Thank you.